Right now. So this is a petition being presented by Dr. Fadi Layos. Maybe mispronouncing that name, but he's requesting a variance from table 26 dash 6.405 point A dash 7 vehicular parking requirements to allow parking in the first lot layers of CD for the district. As we've discussed at previous meetings, the applicant has purchased this property. It was former formerly a minor electronics building business. The applicant has successfully sought a rezoning of the property from a manufacturing district to the CD for commercial zoning. And is proposing to redevelop the building with scroll down here, redevelop the building as a medical office, a medical clinic. The, in order to accommodate the in order to accommodate the increased parking, which is required for this use, the applicant is proposing to add additional parking spaces. If I could get into here, to the front of the building, which you can see here. And then also to increase the number of spaces along the side of the building and so relocate existing parking spaces that are currently along the east edge of the property. This would be a total of 10 proposed new spaces and eight relocated spaces. You may notice that there, that the existing building has parking in to the, to the front of the building. So that parking is permitted to stay as a legal not conformity. Only new or modified improvements have to conform to, to our standard. And the standard in this, in this zoning district is that parking is permitted only in the second lot layer, which is the first 20 feet of the side yard or the third lot layer, which is everything to the rear of the second, second lot layer, including, including the rear yard. So essentially new parking spaces are only permitted on the side and rear of a building. As I discussed, they're proposing new spaces to the front of the building as well as relocated spaces in the southeast corner. One of the, I'll just note that there are a number of improvements that are being proposed in addition to the parking spaces. You could see on this kind of not super detailed plan here, the applicant is proposing to eliminate this driveway on 45th Street and relocate it to Kennedy Court to install sidewalks along both frontages and to implement a code compliant landscaping plan on the entire site. They are also proposing to remodel and reface the building. I'll note that in addition to these variances, they will need to submit a development plan to the, to the planning commission for approval. And this is a public hearing. The, the project was heard at a preliminary hearing last, or actually earlier this month. Plans have not been changed since that time.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderwood. This seems to be an appropriate time and members of the board and the public, please accept my apologies. I need to relinquish the chair to join a work summit starting at seven o'clock. And so with the vice chair not being present, I will turn this over to the immediate past chair, which I believe is Ms. Mayor. Thank you and best wishes.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Okay, so at this point, will the petitioner approach the podium? Can you introduce yourself and provide your address?
I'm the host and still on with the HOH Group Director of Market Sectional Engineering Services, located at 623 Cooper Court in Schaumburg, Illinois. And basically just to summarize pretty much everything else just brought up by Tom, that we're looking just to work with, you know, working with the city of Munster's requirements. And the only way that we can really make this work is by obtaining those variants to fulfill the 46 parking space requirements per the 8,000 square foot of usable space. So I believe it's like 5.7 parking spaces for every thousand square feet. So in order for us to obtain that, we would either have to obtain a variance for less parking or, or allowing parking in the front. And obviously we want to give the best for the client. And we felt like this was the best route and there's no other way around. It's a full, either fulfilling it or not fulfilling it and having less parking spaces. So this was the, the best route we felt.
I have a quick question for you. On the floor plan, there's a, there's a vacant space. Maybe 20 something by 90 something. Is that, is that included in the, in the calculation for the parking number of parking spaces?
Yes, it would.
Want to make sure. Okay. Any questions from the board? Oh wait, we have to open this call. Yes. So at this time, we'll open this to public hearing. If anyone would like to step forward or anyone online, raise your hand. If you have comments. Saying you're hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Bring back the board. And motion.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
How many have a motion second?
Hey, Chairman Mayor.
Yes.
Brad Hemingway.
Yes.
Roland Raffin.
Yes.
Curious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing is BZA 22 dash 16 Munster Properties LLC requesting approval of the variance to allow a reduction in required parking spaces for a medical office at 10,350 Kynan Avenue. Anyone to give a sound briefing on that?
Uh, yes, the applicant Munster Properties LLC is seeking to, similar to our previous hearing, redevelop a kind of industrial building at 10350 Kynan Avenue into a medical office. Representative, this is your chair. You may recognize this building as currently a vacant Harley Davidson dealership. This is the building as the site plan as it stands now. As I said, the applicant is proposing to redevelop property as a medical office. Slide down here to the proposed site plan. Seconds. Under the old zoning, there were, so the, the subject property included 29,754 square foot building. The parking area is currently 74 spaces. At the time it was constructed as a motor vehicle repair and sales used. It had sufficient parking. However, medical offices require additional spaces. So the ratio for medical offices is 5.7 spaces per thousand square feet. Based on that calculation, the required parking for this property is as a medical use, 173 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to increase this, the number of spaces. You can see here on the north side as well as here on the southeast corner. They're adding additional parking. So they're going to increase the total parking from 74 to 132 spaces. So they're requesting a variance to reduce the required number of parking spaces by 41. So they're 41 short. This project was presented at a preliminary hearing in December and the plans were slightly different. Basically, this, this area right here on the northeast corner was kind of inverted the other way. So the parking spaces were heading, kind of facing south rather than facing north. So that was modified and the additional screening was added to the, to the corner here, which reduced the total number of spaces by two. So the previous plan showed 134 spaces, but this plan shows 132. Other than that, the, the plans are exactly the same as were presented at the preliminary hearing. I'll just note that, yeah, in addition, similar again to our previous case, in addition to an internal remodel, the applicants are proposing to, you know, implement a code compliant landscaping plan and make some improvements to the, to the building facade as well.
Thank you. Okay. Would the petitioner like to approach the podium? And introduce yourself and provide your address.
My name is Roger McDowell and my current residence, so so it's 280 Buffalo Hills Road, Roseville, Virginia. I'm the COO of the orthopedic group, the main tenant in the building. And they're also the owners of Munster Properties LLC.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add to, to what Tom introduced us to?
The architect is also on Zoom, so you know, I think I'll defer.
Hi, my name is Laura Pastine. My address is 8401 Somerset, Curry Village, Kansas. I'm representing Gassinger Walker Architects in Kansas City, Missouri. I think beyond what Tom shared to describe the project, and the only thing that I would add is that we are sharing a different standard, the international traffic engineer standard, that instead of the 5.7 spaces per 1,000 square feet, which is the Munster code, the, the ITE uses a 4.27 per 1,000 square feet parking ratio for similar land use of medical office. So in terms of multiplying that standard out across the scale of our site and based on the rough kind of approximate 30,000 square feet of our building, and that would put the requirement at 129 spaces. So right now with our 132, even though we're not meeting the Munster code, we are meeting that other standard of the international traffic engineers. So, so I, I think the case that, you know, we'd like to make is that using a comparable standard, we're able to, we're able to satisfy that with the increase that we have on our, on our site, which does also, I think as Tom mentioned, we're showing landscaping improvements across the entire site. We're also including stormwater detainage to the north end of the site. And we're also maintaining, because there's a fair amount of easements on the property. So we're trying to be thoughtful in, in how we locate things on the site related to that as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we open this up to public hearing, I have a question. I, I see that the, that the site is being expanded to the north. Is that the, as far as you can go, as far as the property that you own?
So yeah, the dark gray that we see is new pavement. So everything within that boundary is part of basically our parcel. So it's all within our, our property boundary. So we're going as far north as we can. We do have a pretty large utility easement to the north. And we, because of how the grades work, that's where we're putting our stormwater detainage. So any new impervious surface, we're balancing all the stormwater that's going to come off that surface. So we're meeting all of the Munster stormwater requirements as well. So our civil engineer sized that stormwater area and to make sure that we could satisfy that stormwater requirement, that area to the north that is not shown with any new pavement is the area that we need to provide that drainage.
The area at the very north is
That's right. Yep.
Okay, any other questions from the board before we open it up? Okay, so at this point, we will open it up to public hearing. If anyone would like to approach and make any comments or anyone online that would like to make comments, please raise your hand. All right, seeing as we're hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and take back the board.
President, I'd like to motion to approve the variance. I'll second.
Before we take a vote on that, I do have a comment though. Because this reminds me, and I cannot think of the name of the doctor, just to the north of 45th, new build, newer building a couple of years ago, orthopedic office.
That's
Combs.
McCombs.
Yes, thank you. Dr. McCombs' office, similar circumstance, short of parking. And now when you drive by there during the day, the people are parking all over the place outside of the parking lot. I don't know if any other board member has gone by there during the day, but that is the case.
I've never observed people parking outside of the parking lot. I have observed that the parking lot is full generally.
Very full.
Which is a good thing, but I guess from our perspective, that this all spaces would be used.
Plus them.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know where, where, where are you seeing the parking?
I see the parking behind the building where there's no parking spaces. There, there's no lines and that parking on the back side and the north side.
Yeah.
How many short were they? I don't remember the exact number.
I just have to look that up.
I, I, because I'm thinking it's similar numbers.
So they were, they were required by our ordinance to have 190 spaces. And they're, they provided 150 based on the 2007 Institute for Transportation Engineers ratio, recommended ratio, which is four and a half spaces per thousand square feet.
And so so what was this square footage? Do you have that in his square footage?
Yeah, we have 33, 33,000 square feet.
So roughly 10% larger than this building. Really close in the number and the ratio to the number of parking spaces, because they're talking about 100, providing 145, is that correct?
I believe it's 42, I believe.
And they can't squeeze out another five spaces on this parking lot.
So they would be required to have an additional 41 spaces. They're short 41 per ordinance. Yeah, they're proposing 132 total and they would be required to have 173.
But I'm just saying, I mean, this, there, there's not another space to be gotten out of this parking lot. I just hate to repeat the same mistake and I feel like it was a mistake. I was the first to abstain on that or not abstain, rejected that vote last time.
I guess from my perspective that, yes, they could add spaces. And we're looking at the site plan now. They are constrained by the need for detention on the north, some easements that Laura mentioned. I guess from my perspective, the only place they could provide additional spaces would be to remove some of the landscaping, some landscape features.
I think that's right. We were trying to balance landscape, stormwater and parking together. We knew we weren't going to be able to get to the 173, the, the full number based on the Munster code, only because to do that, we'd have to add another, basically another column of parking and another driveline. And we just don't have the site area to do that. So we have basically that north bar of parking that's been added to your point over on so Tom, I don't know if you can show over where you were just talking about the portion that was kind of flipped from the last plan. Probably just to the north of that, we could probably gain a couple in terms of going into that stormwater area. But at that point, we wouldn't be needing that stormwater calculation. So I think it would just be a question of, you know, we, we were trying to satisfy as much as possible, knowing that we weren't going to get the 73, or sorry, the 173. So we probably could get a couple of more, but then we would be satisfying stormwater. So it was just a question of how much can we satisfy with the amount of site area that we have to work with?
You know, one other space that could be available for possible overflow parking would be along the west edge of this parking lot. I just kind of looked at it on Google and it looks to me like it's about 38 feet from the edge of this parking lot, parking space to the edge of the property or to the curb. And, you know, potentially a standard drive out was only 24 feet. So you could, you couldn't have 90 degree parking, but you could definitely have.
Well, and I wonder if it would be allowed, because we have a shared ingress easement with our neighbor to the, the BP gas station to the south. And they have a fair amount of parking as well that doesn't look to be used very often. I wonder if there's some type of shared use agreement that the city would be open to.
Well, we do permit shared parking agreements, but it would have to be based on the kind of there's a, there's a factor that we have by depending, based on the different uses as far as how much you can decrease the parking space, you know, the required parking spaces for each use. We'd have to, we'd have to do that calculation. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
That's what BP, with the BP, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, if you were going to have shared parking onsite with the BP, you can definitely have shared parking. There's no, there's nothing that would prohibit you from doing so. But in order for it to come towards your sort of minimum required parking, it would have to be based on a shared parking factor.
Well, maybe this is a conversation just, just for, you know, the town, but you know, it seems like lately all of these petitions that are regarding parking variances are referring to this ITE calculation. So if that's going to be our new norm, then we need to know that.
Uh, so it's not our norm now, but I think that there have been two or three applicants that have pointed out that there are some other organizations who have done recent studies of parking needs and come up with different numbers than what we have in our ordinance. And we're not, while we're not suggesting to anyone, hey, this is our new standard, although it could be, we changed our ordinance. I think the applicants are just bringing this forward as saying part of the criteria that the board looks at when they evaluate a variance application is whether or not it will have adverse impacts on adjacent properties. And they're saying, you know, based on this, this other organization and their, their sort of knowledge about parking needs, we don't believe that this will have negative impact on our neighbors, because we think that we can accommodate all of our clients and patients onsite with the number that we propose. So that's, I'm not saying that that's our standard, but that's the evidence that they're bringing forth that it, although we, they're not meeting our standard, they don't think there will be any adverse impacts if the variance is granted. So that's the evidence that they're providing. It's up to the board to make a decision. Do we believe this to be credible and legitimate or do we not?
And from your perspective?
So I guess from my perspective, I would say that our parking standards have not changed for many, many years. I don't know, you know, what they were based on when they were drafted. I know that we do see a lot of situations like this where people are, are trying to testify based on our knowledge of our operations. We don't believe that we need the number of parking spaces that you're suggesting that we need in your ordinance.
Well, I don't know what the if we were to take a vote today and it was two to one, would, would the motion pass?
No, no, it will have to be. It doesn't, there's only three here, so that's the answer.
So at this point then, petitioner, the motion would fail, right? If we take a vote, it will fail. Otherwise we've been, you would have to wait a year?
No, it would just, there would be no action taken, because if two voted in favor and one voted against, you don't have enough votes to either approve or deny it.
So it would go to the next month, and possibly more, more board members would be present and then it may pass or may not again.
Yes.
So, or you could make, make, make some some changes and then it might pass.
Second that. I think we already got a motion to approve.
We did.
I'll take, I'll reset my motion.
I'll remake my motion, like the motion to table this next one.
Okay, the motion to table.
Yes.
Brad Hemingway.
Yes.
Roland Raffin.
Yes.
Chairman Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. It will be tabled to February 14th. But you'll be there anyway for your development.
Is there a chance to give any kind of commentary in this meeting? I don't want to
More parking if you're 41 short, looking up some ways to add some more parking to it.
Well, I guess, you know, your comment oh, do you want to hear it? And I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to give you a reference point towards utilization of the building. I don't know exactly what's going on with Dr. I don't know exactly what's going on at Dr. Kumas's site, but I know there are multiple physicians in that building, and I don't know what the are, we're going to have three tenants in the building. There's already assigned lease or a surgeon's center. There's two ORs. That means probably three patients in any given time, or in that street, that's 8,000 square feet. The intended third tenant is an imaging center. Typical MRI is for five minutes. There's one, one patient in the building for a number of hours. But there will be staff. For our personal use, we'll maybe have two providers at any given time. They see about four patients per hour, so that's three patients. I just, you know, I want you to know, our utilization rate could be very different than if you're staying at another facility. And I, you know, if the ordinance, we want to be perfectly honest and compliant, but I, I couldn't run this company for 10 years, and we've never had with smaller box, just the way we utilize things. So they, so we only have two providers. Curtis's practice has five. That explains the difference. Because half the building doesn't have a high patient return per hour. So I just wanted to know, in my opinion, I see it as having utilized the building, and we're not particularly white users, but we're efficient. We're for in, for out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. ZA 22-17, Osteo Properties requesting approval of a variance to allow a reduction in the required parking spaces for a dental office of 8250 Holman Avenue. How do you want to say something else on this?
I don't want to sound like a broken record here, but the applicant has purchased property at 8250 Holman Avenue with the intent to redevelop it. At one point, it was an optometrist and it was your, an optometrist and it's a credit card processing place. The intent now is to redevelop the property as a dental office. Family dental care is the business that's seeking to go into this property. It is currently has a 5,514 square foot building and a parking area with 25 parking spaces. Whole were constructed in 1975. A dental office, similar to a medical use, requires 5.7 parking spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area. So the required number of parking spaces for this use is 31. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the lot slightly and add some parking spaces where previously there were parallel spaces. He's adding, they're adding this angled parking to the north side of the lot. So that'll increase the total number of spaces to 29 from 25. So they're adding four spaces. They, in addition to these spaces, they also have a cross access and parking easement between the lot to the north. And there's another parking lot that's not shown, it's image to the northwest. So they, all three of these buildings, there's another office in the west here, share these parking spaces. There was a preliminary hearing held on January 10th, and at the time, we noted that there was some other non-conformities with the, with the site plan, including spaces that were in the first lot layer, so in the front yard of the property. The plans presented tonight have been modified to comply with, with that standard of just show you, they've actually provided this detail of the, the way that the plans have changed. So they're now brought into conformity with that standard, and that the only variance that they're seeking now is from table 26-6.405, 0.0, 0, dash 1, to allow 20, 29 spaces rather than the required 31.
Great. Here we are again. Scott Yeh, my address, office address, 9301 Kelly Road Avenue, Suite 2F in Munster. And thank you for considering us here, him, this evening. We are seeking a reduction. We are required to have 31 under the code. We can have some of the same discussion about the applicable standard. We are adding spaces that are currently 25 onsite. We will increase to 29. And Tom mentioned the cross parking easement agreement that is in place. So right now, there are check my back, it's either 63 or 64 spaces available, and that number will be increased to 68 spaces available. Included as part of our submission, we specifically reached out to our neighbors, who we share this parking, American Community Bank, and also Tom Kirsch. And there are in the packet, I know Tom was looking for images of the existing site, but I was here before. He wanted some more overviews, and those do appear, Tom, on your report. Maybe there, and scrolling down, those are some of the images, so you can see what's there now. But we received responses from both, and John Reed, who also lives in that space, so to speak, responded on behalf of American Community Bank. He replied, his response that's included here, we never had anything close to a parking issue at this location, and I can't imagine in the future, we gave him our detailed plans. Said the share, share alike policy, recorded easements have always worked perfectly. He's out of town, but he had offered that he could be here. You know, we were, February 14th, he said he would have been here this evening to support. And he was replying on behalf of himself and the American Community Bank. Likewise, we received a message from Mr. Kirsch that's included in our submission. Quoted, looking at our plans, this leaves ample parking for customers having business at any of the three buildings. As a result, parking has never been an issue, and he's too set, asked, you know, to convey that he is fully supportive of this plan. They like the plan because it's intrusing, some vibrancy of life to this building. And as part of the adjustments that Tom mentioned to the first lot layer, we're adding some additional landscape, some additional trees, and that detail that Tom was just referencing that it, it shows on both Ridge Road and Holman Avenue that we are adding some landscaping, and that did not reduce the number of spaces that we allowed. But Tom hopefully suggested we could go to compact car spaces for a couple of spots. Mr. Zeno, some of his team accommodated that request. So it is a familiar issue. I don't want to, last time when I was here, I took you through the, the legal, applicable legal standard. I know Tom has offered his opinion. I don't want to drag us down, but I'll be happy to do, go through those items, but I've addressed them in the letter that I submitted as part of our, our packet. I do think that what we have done is, is we've increased the flow of traffic, or the, the safety aspect of this site by having the traffic now exit onto Holman Avenue from our exit, better than always. As it was before, it could create confusion. There is an entry to the lot to the north. So we've simplified the flow of traffic now. There is flow between the existing parking areas, and I think Mr. Zeno, some of his team have come up with a good plan for this, for this site. These folks do want to, they're going to do some substantial improvements to this building. And we did talk last time, there were specific questions about the number of chairs, so 11, the number of employees, six employees, and any other details that you folks might want, the folks that I have here with me tonight will be happy to answer, and I'll do my best as well. So I don't know if there are any specific areas or inquiries that take time. It, most of them are adjustments from the last time we were here. I know there were some questions the last, when we were before you, early January, and provided those overhead images, and then made some adjustments to the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the room or online that would like to comment, please approach or weigh your heat. Okay, seeing as there are none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Chairman Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
I will give a motion in a second.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, Brad Hemingway.
Yes.
Roland Rapp.
Yes.
Chairman Mayor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have no findings of that. Additional items for discussion, I and I spoke a bit before the meeting about Michael Dust. Would remember his garage on Franklin Parkway. The siding over the garage was taken down at some point recently, and now it looks like a garage. So Tom, you want to provide the update on what happened today?
And I think you summarized it well. As you'll recall, the applicant was, or Mr. Dust was denied variance to have second detached garage. He, by preferment, built a garage, detached garage. It was granted on the condition that he closed off his existing attached garage. He closes attached garage after lunch. Urging by the town to fulfill his obligation. Well, he has since, apparently, he built the false wall and has taken it down, and now he has a garage door in his place, so there's really nothing else to say. I mean, I filled the inspector and went out and looked at that, confirmed that it was a track garage door, so you know, we're just going to have to discuss internally what's the appropriate action to take to enforce the zoning standard issues, laying that one, filing. There's not much to say.
So there is recourse though, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
So take legal action, need for him to take down, tear down his new garage, that that's what?
I mean, we haven't spoken with our attorneys yet, although we do have one here present. But typically, we do like code enforcement with Nicole Bennett, she's our attorney that focuses primarily on the code enforcement stuff. So it's something that we're going to have to discuss with her, what's the appropriate action to take. So zoning enforcement is a little bit different from like a simply like a code enforcement or property maintenance, and we're in a position to find there's a much more detailed process, yeah, it's a different process. It may involve actually coming back to what's on deals to sort of adjudicate the, if he so desires to challenge our interpretation. See that being successful, but anyway, I don't want to, I don't want to say too much, because like I said, we haven't really discussed the process that we're going to follow. We'll be consulting with, it's not a doctor.
It's oh my gosh, he's on the corner of Franklin and the street the north of Frank Hammond, Oriole, Oriole. He's right on the corner of Frank, of Brandon and Oriole.
Yeah.
So that the garage he built is that, that one. That's the new one. And he's got a shoe store. Yeah, so it's the garage in the center of the house. That should have been pulled off. Okay, well, thank you, Tom. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Keep your night.
Yep.
You guys.
You.
Yep.
Bager Canyon Flowers.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Right?
That's right.